Of the Asbury Park City Council Workshop Session, Monday, March 14, 2016. Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Councilmember Warner.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please rise for a silent prayer or moment of reflection. Flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, great job giving it a brief.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, I don't put notice that this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coastern Star Ledger on January 6, 2016, and posted on Bolton Board the same date. All notices are filed with the city clerk. Item for review: City Manager's report on issues raised at prior council meetings.
At the last council meeting, one of the residents asked a thousand, approximately $75 dollar payment as part of the Springwood Center. Going back to the file, there was an order in, I believe it was 2012, that it's part of the allocation of the operating expenses, which is based upon the square footage. The LLC maintains 0.58% of the square footage while the city owns and operates 0.42%, which is approximately $31,500 a year, which would be the quarterly payment of about $7,500. So the payment is part of the agreement to build the senior center in Springwood. That's all I have.
Can I just, excuse me, add a little bit about that? Because I asked you for copy and I wrote it myself. And you correct me if I'm wrong, it's a 35-year agreement.
Yes.
That's a long time. And plus, it did not list who makes up the condominium board association. So do we have any people in the condominium board association since we own 42% of it?
Not that I saw. I read the same thing.
Yeah, so should that be addressed?
If we talk to the developers about it, we see if we can find a way to have it.
And I thought some of the flat fees were awful high.
It seems that reading that they base the flat fees on future growth. It seems to be a hard part to get to the part of financial.
Right, okay, so we'll look at it and address it down the way. Thank you.
Up to special events, Leisha.
First application for the mayor and councilors who just aides walk, which will be held on May 1st. Second is the bike, MS Bike Five, and they ride through the city, that will be on May 21st.
I had some questions about that one, Leisha. It doesn't say anywhere where they ride.
But I do have the map upstairs and invite along Ocean Avenue, Deal Lake, and then out of the city.
And then do we close those streets?
No, no.
How many people are riding?
A lot, but they're in and out.
They estimate 1,500, but not at the same time throughout the course of the day.
So from eight to one, approximately 1,500. And what, do they have waves, like in triathlon? So they do the first wave and the second wave?
No, it's like who's in good shape and who's in bad shape.
Okay.
There's the waves. And it's been going on for many years.
Yeah, they've been going this way. They bye-bye.
Had no problem.
Okay, I didn't realize. I had no idea that events have been going on for years. I have the same question.
Third is Best Day Foundation, and they're requesting to come back to Surfing Beach to do their surfing event for children with special needs. And that will be on July 16th and 17th. Next, Diva Dodgeball is requesting to turn to the city on July 16th and August 27th to do their annual event, which will be held on Third Avenue Beach. Iglesia Maritana Church is seeking to do their revival on July 30th in Sunset Park. Art Star Crafters are delighted to return on July 30th and 31st to do their art and craft show in Bradley Park. Cathedral International. Cathedral International would like to do their ocean baptism, their annual baptism, on July 31st on Sixth Avenue Beach. And Newman Community Center is requesting to do a Day of Hope Family Festival in Bradley Park on August 20th. We have two wedding applications, one for September 25th, the other for a cold burst both working at the beach. And lastly, I got a email today from Chris from Assam, Marquette. Initially, the city council had approved the code for surfing contests. It was going to be held sometime between February 27th, 7th, and March 18th. And on the weather conditions, well, weather conditions are not going to be right up until the 18th. So they're requesting to only extend their waiting period until May 30th, I'm sorry, March 31st, to do that event, if that's okay with the council.
No problem.
That's it for me.
Thank you.
We're now on to presentations. Item to be presented for Asbury Park Skateboard Foundation, Brian Watkins.
Yep, you just sit up there.
Thank you, City Council, City Manager, President of Asbury Park. My name is Brian Watkins, I'm a homeowner in Asbury Park since 2007. During the spring of 2015, I, along with several other local skateboarders, formed the Asbury Park Skateboard Company. We are a nonprofit for a region in New Jersey, but recently applied for our 501(c)(3) status with the IRS. The goal of our foundation is to plan, fundraise, and build a free community skate park at no taxpayer expense. Skateboarding as a whole will open doors up for our youth not seen before. Aside from the obvious health benefits, skateboarding lacks any socio-economic boundaries. It will spur creativity, perseverance, and determination like the love. We plan to engage the youth from various angles of skateboarding. In the planning, the development, and construction, the youth of Asbury will learn architecture, engineering, and all the design aspects of going to building a skate park. We have begun this recently with a graphic design contest in the schools that gave away six brand-new winner codes to the contest winners. Over the last 10 months, we have been at various locations within the city, including Springwood Avenue, various school properties, and existing art properties. We've spoken with organizations such as the Housing Authority, the Board of Education, and Intervene Neighbors, trying to find a suitable location to construct a skate park. So this conversation and countless car rides led us throughout all corners of the city before finding this place located at Main Street, Fifth Avenue, Bon Street, and Sunset Avenue. We feel this is the perfect location for several reasons. Visibility, from the direct view of Main Street, said heavily traveled through the fair of Asbury Park. Accessibility is close to the high school and the elementary schools. It's an underutilized space, no place to even sit down and enjoy lunch. Further, it sits in the Main Street redevelopment area. Space falls into the redevelopment of Main Street. We envision this skate park as a start to a larger community gathering space in this underutilized park location that will offer various activities, not limited to skateboarding. Things such as a performance space, farmers' markets, and the Latino and religious gatherings that spring up from time to time in this location. We do want to point out that feedback from the 2014 West Side Citizens United survey determined a skateboard park was the second most voted want for the youth in Asbury. With that said, we intend to work further with the schools and the Asbury Park Recreation Committee to conceive and implement skateboard-related programming both before and after the park is completed. Once the park is completed, we plan to use our relationships in the skateboarding industry to partner with nonprofit groups like ASKE, a group based in Alabama that holds skate workshops for autistic children, and Boards for Bros, which brings lightly-used skateboards into the hands of kids who otherwise do not have access to them. In the coming months, we look forward to establishing a close working relationship between our volunteers and the appropriate city staff to keep this project moving forward from a concept to a reality, ideally within 24 months. And lastly, most of all, we want to formalize support from the community, the city council, and the city manager for the skateboard park concept, proposed location, which will enable us to raise funds for our design and construction through various grants and corporate donations, such as the Tony Hawk Foundation for Neighbors. We'd like to thank you all for taking the time to hear us today. We look forward to further discussion on this project.
You don't want all of that park, Brian, right? You just want a portion of Sunset.
And just, Brian and some of his crew have been in front of the Recreation Commission three or four times.
Numerous times.
Today, and we asked lots of questions. We've sent them back to the Housing Authority, to the Board of Ed, to different locations. They talked about Springwood to start. And they've done everything that the Recreation Commission has asked and done their due diligence on everything. So it's, the next step was to come here and answer some of the council questions.
And just, hold on a second. One of the first things that Brian and his comrades did was they looked at the West Side, and I think your first thought was Springwood Avenue. And then he was told that that's not visible for them, and it's not the right thing. Right, not the right place to put it. And then he looked all over the city. But he had been with, he had came to the Recreation Committee numerous of times, and I think he saw just about everybody on the committee that, that it would be a good for our kids. And the more I, I live on Fourth Avenue in Pine, and I see kids gonna start doing away with their bicycles, they're more into the skating now. And as long as they be safe and they follow rules, sounds good.
My question is liability. If this park is placed there and anything happens, who's responsible?
So the liability falls under the JIF insurance that the city has? It's no different than a basketball court or a tennis court or anything like that?
Yeah, which was a big question that we had in the beginning, and other cities have the same setup with the JIF that we have that happen. So it wasn't easy. Please answer.
And if this were, if this were a go, Brian, what do you need from the city?
We need, we need your formal, I formally said this spot's designated for the skate park.
And are there currently trees and stuff all in that area?
We wouldn't take any trees down. If we had to, we'd put them back up, obviously. The spot within the park, if it found, I don't think it would be found.
Brian, haven't you talked to any of the neighbors that live close to that area?
So we have decisions that we included in the package. We have, you know, close to 1,000 resident signatures. Talked to various business owners and residents in that area. The ones that answered the door, they seem to be okay with things.
Anyone else? I've got to agree with Joe that you've done your due diligence. You've done a great job. I've got to totally agree with you that our parks are underutilized. And this is a park that's been sitting there, and I remember before you were here, before anyone's here, you just had a sign, basically, know this, know that.
They're still a sign.
Well, I walked right by it looking at it the other day. It says, from the police department, no ball playing, no trespassing. It was like a no trespassing, it sounded like, don't go into.
Don't use this park.
That sign is better than the old signs. And so we've cut him off a little bit. The old signs used to basically say, no fuck. I mean, just break down. It was like, no fuck, you know, just go away. So it's, they're underutilized. I think you've done a great job. I know as much as he met with the Recreation Committee, I know I've met with Brian, and I'm very supportive of this idea. You look at a two-year maximum timeframe, I think we can get it up and going before then. You're raising all the money, you're going to build it, you're going to do everything. I mean, to me, it's almost a no-brainer.
So then our side, we have to, like, formally designate it like that? Is it, is it part of the Main Street redevelopment zone? It is. So then, does there need to be an amendment process in the plan?
It'd be, it'd be a amendment if you have a survey of where exactly.
Where the specific location is.
Which I don't think is a big deal. Shouldn't. Brian, did you talk about putting the fence up? I don't recall.
We would like to not have a fence.
Right. But you said it's possible if council wants scrubbery, you would scrub it. You would make it, put scrubbery in trees and things like that, and benches. Yeah, okay. Anything else?
I guess just what's the next step? What should, what's, do we have Michelle look at the plan and?
I'll talk to Michelle.
Okay.
Brian's, now that he's got a, I would say, he's hearing positive things out here. So he's got the okay to go ahead and start formally raising money? And this is something like?
Has it been addressed with the JIF yet, NJIAD?
Probably not. So again, what's our next?
We had an insurance meeting this morning, and they brought up about other towns. The liability is when people stop using it as a skate park and start using it as a bicycle ramp. And that's where they're getting all the claims from. So this, as part of a normal insurance, it's no big deal. It's when people start using it for other avenues, it means that it turns into a problem.
Just needs like anything else to.
Yeah. Okay, let's keep negotiations open. And you're hearing up here, and nobody's against it. We just have to work out the kinks.
Great, thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, Brian.
Right, we're now on to review of agenda items for Wednesday's meeting.
Just for my own notification, Michael, when you say, so the stuff with the JIF isn't necessarily a problem, but when it turns, if you're using it for a purpose that it's not authorized to be used for, that, that becomes the issue. I got you.
Should we take 140, 2016, 142 out of the consent?
Do what? Should we take it out of the consent? Wait, wait, wait a second. Because I have tons of questions also, so which one do we want?
Closing of the beaches?
Yeah.
So we'll just make that part of the individual resolutions as opposed to being part of the consent agenda? Are you comfortable with that?
Okay, no, no. No, I didn't know if it was this specific. I mean, we're not raising rates, so I didn't.
No, no, I know, you're right. I just can't vote them. I know it brings us money in September, but I can't.
Okay, no problem.
It's simple.
Oh, okay.
Take it out of consent, no problem.
I had one about 150. Was the state the extension, was that the change order?
Yes.
That was it?
Yeah, nothing else, no money, no anything.
Just the timing?
Yep.
Okay.
Wait a second, let's get the bar.
Delaying project.
And then, I can jump back up, sorry. What was the July 4th Dedicated Trust Fund? Was that for the parade?
That was from the parade that hasn't.
Happened in the last.
Happened in the last three to four years. So the money was just sitting there. So we contacted Deputy Mayor Bruno, who raised that money, and said, are you bringing it back? He said, no. Do you mind if we put this money into recreation? He said, no. So the money's just sitting there. So we just started off going to recreation.
That's a great idea. 51, 151, 152, I was confused. Are they the same? Are they just two properties next to? I was.
One is for Carter Sackman, so we can establish. I'll wait till the call's done. Sorry. One is for Carter Sackman for an escrow, for an amendment to the central business.
Right.
Another one is for, that's a property, another amendment to central business.
I was, I knew the first one was coming. I didn't know about the second one.
They just established the escrow.
Can I? So are we agreeing to these amendments?
No, it's just a resolution saying that they're giving us escrow money.
Right, if they want to move forward with any of their plans, to move forward, you have to establish escrow accounts. Now, the thing, I have questions about that is, I, I think the dollar amount is kind of crazy. It says you start an escrow account with $3,000. And then once you fall below $3,000, you've got to bring it up to $3,000, which.
That's a big one.
Hear me out. Soon as we send them a letter, okay, it's going to be $175, you're going to be, you should start off the escrow account like, say, and make it up numbers. $10,000, and once you fall below $5,000, because $3,000, $3,000, it's going to be the same debt. So I mean, there's no wiggle room in there whatsoever. Why would you start an escrow account for $3,000 and say, as soon as you fall behind, $3,000, which is the first letter from the attorney saying, you got your escrow account. Now they're at $2,725, they got to bring it back up. So I think the numbers should be adjusted.
Those places I've seen, it's been, somebody's been $5,000 minimum. And the counts, you're supposed to have an internal threshold to say at $1,000, they should get a letter saying to replenish, because legally you're supposed to stop working.
Right.
But I think that $3,000 is a little low.
I think it's low, and I also think it should be like $5,000. Once you go to $2,500, then you've got to reimburse. But yeah, so I'm against the $3,000, $3,000. But they're just escrow accounts, but it makes no sense. So start it off at $3,000, and soon as you spend one hour, you've got to reimburse us.
Well, I think also too, it depends on what the, I'll talk to Michelle about this, about what the proposed is, because this is just this internal staff reviewing thing where we've been sending to the Development Council.
If it's, if it's, if it's now or later, it's going to happen.
I guess I was confused just because they both deal with heights, but they're separate projects, completely independent of each other.
Johnny Mac, that's the one.
Ah, okay.
It's harder to.
Right, and neither one has anything to do with the projects. This is just escrow.
Right, right, right.
So I think the dollar amount should be changed.
Some of them are dollars.
Do what?
Pay the dollar amount up to $5,000.
And yes, and then once it goes to like, whatever number, I think $1,000 is too low. Once it goes to like, say, $2,500 or $2,000, then, because time's ticking in between. I don't want a project slowed down because, oh, we can't have our redevelopment where we look at, because you only have $1,900 in there.
We, we keep going, and then we work with them and say the very thing. We won't get the final approval until everything, we keep working through the process.
Okay, just straighten that out, I have no problem.
And then I had 155, just wanted to talk about the location. I know last year we had, this is the dune grass planting. I know last year we started to extend the dune around the front of the boardwalk there. And I just thought, if we want to do that, again, this year, we could put up the snow fence and just extend the area and have the American Nutoral Society come in and do that area. I know there were talks, someone had suggested maybe even front of the other dunes, but without moving the snow fences, I think it would get trampled. And those dunes already, I think, are serving their purpose in developing. So the thought was just to kind of keep extending it down the boardwalk, especially since we got hit there during Sandy the worst, as far as the Waste Worth Driven Plan. If everybody's all right with that, or?
Well, no, I have problems with it also, just because it says to plant beach grass essentially along its beaches. That means the entire mile. Now, I don't think we want beach grass the entire mile, do we?
No, we, last year we did that dune, it was like 20 feet or something.
Right, so then this, but five years from now, but none of us are here. Somebody could interpret this like, well, you said it for the entire mile, so it should be specified. You're talking about the north end only, and like, from here to there. Because the way it reads right now, it's the mile length of the boardwalk. Somebody could come down here and, and I know the Nutoral Society doesn't have that many plants, and they're just looking for the north end, but it's open-ended right now, where it could be the entire beachfront.
We didn't know where, when I wrote this, I didn't know where anyone wanted it.
Well, the, the north end, I think Joe's right.
Put the north end, and then they only have enough plants to do.
Very little, but even there, you know, we're hoping one day it'd be a high star if somebody does the meandering boardwalk, and they don't have to rip up this dune grass.
Right, they can work around it.
Right, so, I mean, I know Joe's more on top of this than me, so I didn't like the entire lake, like a mile-long beachfront, where, you know, no fence to Bradley Beach or anything, but you go to Bradley Beach Boardwalk and you cannot see the ocean, because they have dunes and beach grass, where on our south end, you can see the ocean.
Yeah, yeah, no, the south end has always been more of a discussion. I mean, I know there's some business owners that would like dunes there, others that don't.
And then on the complete south end, by the power plant, or south of the casino, we do have some grass there. So if they want to plant there, I have no problem either.
Should I just write to extend where it's?
Yeah, I would say extend, you know, along the northern end.
Yeah, okay.
Because it's really the northern end, that's, the idea with playing that piece there was that there's been discussion about what John's talking about, the whole boardwalk. But nobody wants to jump right into that. So this was like a trial dune at the end, where the seniors are right there, they're supportive of it. And then if we can extend it, and if people feel good about it, then we can have further discussions.
Right, and it is working, so we want to continue it. And yeah, the Nutoral Society's a big help for this.
Did I have more? The last one I had was the Ordinance 07. What was the language in there? Why is that acquisition of property in there? Just out of curiosity.
Just because, just because we kind of, it's happened now.
Yeah, okay. Makes sense, I think, yeah.
Okay, got it.
My question is, what, what was the event that's planned for June 5th?
Speak up, sit in the back.
Is it one?
Isn't that the?
It's just a catering permit.
Yes, it's a problem.
It's at the hotel. I mean, we don't have anything to do with it. We just have to approve the permit. We don't, it's not a city event.
I believe it's a big problem.
I don't think it's a big problem, I'm trying to think.
And then the next, but maybe I'm wrong. The next one is, we have DDUCK meters, so they're.
What number you want?
Oh, I'm sorry. Just explain to me what it is.
If a business watering their lawn, we, we, just, I hear feedback. We bill per usage, per sewer usage, and if someone's watering their lawn, for example, a business, they don't get charged for that, because it's not going into the conveying system. So businesses will install, it's called a DDUCK meter, and we take that 5, 10, 20 gallons off the normal sewage bill, because we're not treating it.
Can we get a list of all those before Wednesday? Because like, does the, no?
That's what we're reviewing right now.
Just because I'm curious, and I've been curious for the past 15 years, like the big laundry on Second and Memorial, do they have a DDUCK meter?
That's what we're reviewing now.
Well, then I'm not going to vote yes on this till we get the list. Just because, I mean, do we have, I guess we have a lot, you're finding out.
I would assume so, but as they're going, as they come up, we have to reimburse or we're just to credit the accounts over.
Which I have no problem doing that, but I mean.
We'll get you a list as soon as we can compile it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, 2016-140. And just the question is, the fire department is going to be using JCP and L space?
Has been, will continue to.
Okay, so this is, this is nothing new.
At no cost to the city, except the insurance.
This is about the beach, 2016-142. Just clarification, from starting May 28th through June 18th, the beaches will only be charged for the beaches on the weekends. And during the week, they'll still be free to the public.
And there's, just so the public knows, and the county knows, and the state knows, there's no increase in Asbury Park beach fees this year. It's still the fist bang for the ball. Take your time, because I'm going to, I'm going to drive you crazy with the questions. Go ahead.
Okay, Ordinance 2016-09, dash 09. Do you know what the cross street is, where this is actually located?
I can give you the map.
And, and the next question is, and is the adjacent owner wishes to purchase this land?
No, not that I can tell.
Since, since this is an undersized parcel though, under the local lands and buildings law, we have to offer this to the adjacent property owners.
But one of the adjacent property owners does want one.
One wants it, one doesn't.
Yes, so there is at least one adjacent property owner that is interested in buying this property. And we have no public purpose or use for it.
It's a, it's a slipper, like it starts at like three feet, goes back to like twenty feet. It's on the north side of Springwood Avenue.
And we're required to offer it to all adjacent property owners, and then to award to the highest bid from among the adjacent property owners. And we have a minimum bid price, I believe, of five thousand dollars, which came from the tax assessor.
Right.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Okay, so let's start with consent agendas. Two oh-one sixteen one twenty-nine. This is the SAFER grant, and this is not what we talked about in the finance committees or the budget committees, so why are we adding three more firemen?
This is also for discussion later. Um, it is proposed to hire, to apply for a SAFER grant, to hire two firemen to replace the two that are anticipated to retire in November. The way the SAFER grant works, is the first two years, it's one hundred percent on the grant, and then in year three, you start picking up the costs. Um, right now, it's transitional aid, municipality, that drastically helps the application because it needs to be a city or a municipality in distress. We're not gonna be able to, we're gonna get knocked down on points in the future applying for, what is free money to, to staff fire department. The recommendation from staff, if you're sitting here obviously, if you have any questions, is to, to replace the two that were anticipated to retire in November.
And I, we had no problems with that in budget meetings or personnel meetings, but that's not what it reads, it says. And I would ask this be taken off the consent agenda. Uh, SAFER program for two replacements of retired firefighters, and that's an assumption, because if they decide not to retire, then we have two more firemen we maybe need or don't need. And then, the thing that threw me further is something we never discussed about, three additional firefighters. So, we discussed the two that may be retiring, but we never discussed three more, so... And just with the city on transitional aid, I, I don't see how we can afford three new firemen at this point in time. I don't care if the state pays for it for the first two years, that's all nice and fine. We've reduced contract prices where they started at a lower rate, with or without SAFER. Uh, and we've had this discussion before with past city managers, saying, and I understand we have some reports out there saying we should have X amount of firemen, and we're below that, but we had X amount of firemen last year, and we budgeted Y amount of overtime, and we did not exceed that account. So why would we be adding three more, which will exceed that account? To me, financially, a city on transitional aid, it just does not make sense.
Uh, Mayor, to answer your questions, this, the grant process changes from year year. Uh, this time, we, we were requesting to, uh, apply for a grant for two purposes. One, to replace two firefighters that are retiring at the end of the year, anticipating that. The grant process now allows you to anticipate retirees, that's part one. And the new part was to add three additional firefighters, to bring us up to twelve firefighters per shift, still with a nine firefighter minimum, although we would hope somewhere in the future, we would be able to raise our number of sta- uh, staffing to eleven, but because of budgetary issues and overtime, we keep it at nine. But by having twelve firefighters per shift, it would allow us to at least start off, uh, every shift with eleven firefighters, and then as, uh, people are out sick or injured or anything like that, they would, um, uh, we would just go down to nine before we hired overtime. And the reason is for twelve, when you have twelve people on a shift, we only allow one person to take vacation at a time, and twelve vacations equals about a year, uh, about a year. So there's always gonna be one person on vacation. Uh, a big point gatherer for these applications is NFPA standards, and NF, we're shooting for NFPA seventeen-ten standards, uh, and anything less than four firefighters per fire apparatus, we lose a lot of points. If we don't apply for five, our chances go, go down pretty drastically, be successful in the next year.
Okay, a- again, and Chief, I, I think you do a great job, I think the fire department does a great job. I'm hoping this is something maybe two years down the road, we can think about it and everything, but again, we're still on transitional aid, and to hire, hire three new bodies at this point in time, I just can't do for the taxpayers of Asbury Park. As far as like, i- if you showed me budget numbers where last year, we spent a gazillion dollars in overtime, because we were shorthanded, I would say, well, you got a point, but we did not do that. So we would be adding three new bodies that, the wrong term is gonna be not needed, but not needed this time, in my opinion. So again...
I, I understand, and from a budgetary standpoint, you are absolutely right. It's just that, I'm very concerned that they've had this conversation with the manager. Every year, we get busier and busier, and it's getting harder and harder to, uh, respond to calls in a timely fashion, especially between, um, Memorial Day and Labor Day. So I will be having further conversations to see how creative we can get with the manager.
Okay, and I appreciate that, I know you have done a great job in the past, and your department has, so we appreciate that. Uh, when, we, we applied for a SAFER grant last year, and we didn't receive it, and we, which neither here nor there, but we were told the results would not be into August, so when would this SAFER grant's results be in?
Uh, the deadline is the end of this month.
To apply, when, when's, that's to apply?
To apply, I, I, off the top of my head, I, I can't tell you when the deadline is gonna do announce, but I can find that out.
Okay, and again, part that scares me, and this is not the killer, but you say, we, we think two firemen are gonna retire, but no, only one's retiring in sixteen, one's retiring in seventeen. From the paperwork we went through the budget over, so if they both decide not to retire, then we have five extra firemen.
You could also apply for the grant and then not accept it.
In past years, I believe we were told, that's not possible. And that's what happened in past years, when, before any of us were up here, they applied for many, and they were told, you gotta accept it because you applied. Okay.
There are so many nuances with these grants, and they, they change each grant cycle a year, but because we're applying for two anticipated retirements, and I don't wanna go on record as saying this is fact, but historically, and I believe this to be true, and I will find out, is you can amend, if you get an award, and then the fire, uh, for those two firefighters, and they didn't re- retire, we would be, uh, able to amend our award, but I will find that out for sure.
Okay, thank you. And then find out, we can also amend the three new ones.
Yeah, we, we could, you mean amend it after, if the grant was awarded?
If the grant was awarded, Kim, like Michael said, we can say no, because in past years, past councils were told no. You applied, you, it's, it's game over.
Okay.
If you assign a grant agreement, there's...
I'm not saying they were told the truth, that's what I'm saying, it happened in Asbury Park.
I just have one question related to that. Um, Kevin, they have to live in Asbury Park to be hired as an Asbury Park?
That's correct.
Okay, and is there any way that we could put on how long you have to live in Asbury Park, so they don't live in Asbury Park, take the test, and move out of Asbury Park? So you need to give us three to five years?
That is a legal question, I, I can't answer. But I can say that they're on probation for one year. Historically, that's what we've been held onto, just talking one year. As far as, uh, maintaining residence, residency for X amount of time, I, I can't answer that, I don't think that would be a legal question. I know that for police and fire, it's, it's different than other city employees.
So can you get, can you check that, Michael? Only in that, if, if we were applying, and we were hiring, and we could make them live in town for a certain period of time, right? Because we know all the benefits of living in town, um, can we im- implement for the two, or however the vote comes out, for, for the, for the people we're gonna hire, they need to live in town for three to five years?
Well, not being a lawyer, I'll give you my legal opinion, the answer is no. Because it's either Governor Cahill or Byrne, many years ago, beef...
I'll wait for a lawyer. If a lawyer tells me that, then I'll, I'll accept it. No offense.
Well, it's, it's state, it's state law.
Yeah, I know there's statutory provisions on this for police, I'm, I'm sure that they also relate to fire.
Right, it's, it's state law. You, you have to live in Asbury Park two days, the day you apply, and the day you're hired. After that, you can move out. And that's state law.
Kevin, one question, what's the starting salary for the fireman?
Uh, I believe it's just over thirty thousand if you don't have any certifications. If you have your firefighter one certificate and your New Jersey, uh, EMT, it's around forty-one thousand.
For someone just coming out of the academy?
For some, for someone graduating the academy, going into the academy, it's about thirty, thirty-one thousand.
Two oh-one six one three oh. These are sewer cap. Are we getting close to the end of those, or we're gonna have a ton more? Two oh-one six one thirty-four. Okay, resolution to cancel taxes. This is going back to two thousand nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. But we're, we're canceling taxes on city properties only, right?
Yes.
Who, why were we charging city property taxes? Were we paying them?
No, we weren't paying, it was a coding issue in the software, that we're finding as we're going through...
Okay, so this is just cleaning up?
Cleaning up the past.
Doesn't cost us anything.
It would have been funnier if we were paying them.
Then, then we would...
We'd have a refund.
We'd have a surplus, right? Two oh-one six one thirty-six. Uh, this is getting rid of what somebody says is junk equipment, surplus property.
It's all fire department.
Oh, okay. So, I have no problem with that. In the future, could we get like, a list of when it was bought? And like, the last time we did this, I'm gonna say like a month and a half ago, the police department listed like, when it was bought, blah, blah, blah.
We have it available, we'll put it on.
Okay, so this is nothing we can give to somebody else to use? I mean, be it another charity or anything?
No, these are old, inadequate, kind of something, uh, books.
Okay. One forty-nine.
They came in over budget.
We rejected the bids for the outlaw?
Okay, and we got, I see there's, and we got...
The resolution tonight, that was my error, I apologize.
No, no problem. Thing that scares me here. What are we doing next?
They're providing the scope, um, getting rid of some of the additional work, and that should drop it down from the unit prices of what it fits within the budget.
But this is emergent, because we were told, we were down, making up the numbers, we had fifty-four diffusers, and we were down to eighteen, we lost one more, we're losing the sewer plant.
Uh, they fixed some of them in house, so we're okay. Should be okay.
Let's go to two oh, this is individual resolutions. Two oh sixteen eighty-six, just my personal opinion, I think this is an absence trust fund, just my personal opinion. I think the dollar amount's too high, we've had this discussion, no big deal. Two sixteen one forty-four. Why's it called emergency?
Many temporary budget appropriations, what do we call it?
To, to make emergency temporary appropriations, why are they emergency?
That's what the state calls it.
Okay, so they're not really emergency?
Well, if you don't have temporary budget, you don't have the budget, it's gonna be rolling, but I guess that's...
That's an emergency.
Yeah, that might be one.
Okay, and one four, two sixteen one forty-six, I think Amy asked you this, the price is eighty-nine, and we're getting thirty-five, so the cost of the city's, this is for, I'm sorry, this is for body cameras, and the price is eighty-nine thousand, we're getting a grant for thirty-five thousand, so the cost of the city is fifty-four thousand dollars, and where's that money coming from?
Capital. This is capital ordinance from two years ago.
The two thousand and fourteen, one point five million dollars? Maybe?
Maybe.
Or, or MICA grants still out there that are spent, but it's not coming out of...
That was a fourteen ordinance.
Okay, but it's not coming out of like...
No, we're not paying it from temporary budget.
Okay. One forty-seven. This is shared services to go into, to, with Deal, which I, I like, and this is better than the one we have with the county?
No, it's different. Um, the county want, um, work on fire, our pumps, they'll work on everything from bumper to bumper, but they won't touch our, our actual pumps, they pump the water to fire, and they won't touch our aerial devices. So what we do is we go out to, uh, a vendor for those specialized parts of the fire apparatus. The borough mechanic in Deal used to work at P L Custom, he's an emergency vehicle technician, he has that certification. That, among the other things, he's right in Deal, and he'll drive down and, uh, take a look at our stuff at a moment's notice, where logistic, we, we move stuff out, out to the county for regular stuff.
Fantastic, thank you.
No, it's a good, it's a good deal, and it doesn't cost anything, because they asked us if we could do some training for them, so it kinda washes.
No, and Deal's been very good with us in past practices, and last summer, helping us with that fiasco and everything, so, okay, I just, uh... One forty-eight, is this a renewal of a contract that should have gone out two and a half years ago? The cost to city eighty thousand dollars, and wasted money?
Yes.
I know you're... One fifty, Sodan's contract. And this is just an extension, and no dollar increase?
No, it's an extension.
Okay, you gotta type it on the top. Since two thousand sixteen, it's right, should be two thousand fifteen? No problem. And if there is any cost overruns, wasn't it, I Star would take up all cost overruns?
Yeah.
Credit card. And, and there's no, no.
No.
And there's no attached change order, dollar amount to this. So what's the change, what, what is it, it's a cha- it's a change order for something, but it doesn't have a dollar amount, so what is the dollar amount for this?
There's no dollar change, it's just extended time.
There's no dollar change, okay. Okay, ordinances. Sorry, we got a lot of questions. Oh six. Which I can't even find. What is oh six?
Exceeding the cap.
Okay, explain, so the public, clue myself.
Do you want me to explain what a cap bank is?
Please. You, you read the ordinance and explain it to everybody?
Pleasure.
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 What a cap bank is, is there's two caps under New Jersey's fiscal affairs and budget law. One is the levy cap, which everyone refers to as a two percent cap, and then there is appropriations cap, which has certain appropriations, there's no more than three and a half percent. So there's caps within caps, and caps with on, with on top of caps. What a cap bank is, is, isn't that three and a half percent, um, say it's a hundred dollars, you're allowed to go up, you can go to a hundred and three dollars and fifty cents in one year. If you go to a hundred and two, you can bank that one dollar and fifty cents for the following budget year. So in fifteen budget, the city didn't go up to the appropriation cap limit, had some bank, and this year, in the budget that's gonna be introduced on Wednesday, there again, we're not going all the way up to that three and a half percent appropriation limit, and that will establish a bank in future years.
Okay. Oh eight, this is about Overlook Park, and, uh... This is about Overlook Park and, uh, where the. It's gotta be approved by the planning board, blah, blah, blah. Oh, okay. I was gonna say, should we wait to do all this before we get the money? When do we get the cash? Show me the money.
Well, we have to do this first and then we can do all the legal work.
It's, it's, it's in process, the, the legal work, that we develop, as well as the closing to transfer title, to that twenty-five by one hundred, but portion of the park that was sub divided off from the remainder.
Okay, so, but what happens if we do all this work, we change the CBD plan, we do this, and then they say, guess what, we're not paying?
Well, they have been so anxious about this.
I know, they've been chomping at the bit, they put up a sign, they did, okay, fine, I just think maybe you should get the money first, I, I don't know.
I mean, you, I don't know if they can give you the money first.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say too.
Until the paperwork is done, until this is adopted, because this is.
But what we're doing.
Maybe a percentage, maybe you could ask them for a percentage of the money first, if you feel that, if you, if you're worried, a deposit, a deposit.
Deposit.
We'll ask.
Okay.
I mean, we already had an initial deposit that was under the, the purchase and sale agreement that dates all the way back to two thousand.
We spent that three years ago.
And, and this is something that they've been very persistent about trying to get this process moved forward for so long that I don't see.
Okay.
Possibility that it's not gonna come to, this deal is gonna be consummated, but, um, if. If you wanna wait, I mean, you could.
No, I, I don't wanna wait, I wanna, I wanna get the money so we can use it to either add money to other parks, whether it's a tenant for, or to use money to reduce taxes, so if that's the process, fine.
I mean, it's known and understood and it's part of the agreement that the city shall move forward with this, uh, as part of the overall undertaking, so.
Okay, that's, that's all I have, thank you.
That's it. Matters from council.
Uh, we covered all mine except just a thank you to the St. Patrick's Day parade crew, Garrett Guyerson Jr. and everyone else, they did a great job.
Chamber did a great job.
Chamber.
Chamber.
Nothing, just Jesse.
Yes. I'd like to know, um, from the city manager or the mayor or any councilman, who do we go to talk to about these cab drivers? I think they're totally outrageous. Every time you look around, they're arguing and fussing or speeding down the street. They have disrespect for, uh, the people that they pick up at the local supermarkets or downtown or any street. And they always ducking in and out. And when you say something to one of them or I see him arguing with people. Spring situation on Third Avenue and Lightford, that, that store there, what's the name of it, anyone know? The grocery store on Third Avenue?
Super Avenue.
Super, super.
Super, super.
All right, give you a sample of what I'm talking about. I would say this lady must've been in her seventies and late seventies. She was trying to get in the car, she didn't get no help, and then the cab driver took off, and she almost fly out the door on the car, it was sad to see. And then he finally stopped, all groceries all over the place, and he get to arguing at the lady. And I have seen situations and things like this for years, but nobody never approached the cab drivers. Who do you talk to about this?
Don't we have a taxi cab commission?
Cindy's office, right?
You can bring it to our attention, it really would be a police, uh, policing, especially when it comes up to renewing their, their licenses. Um, you know, unfortunately, our hands are tied to a certain extent, you know, if they're rude, they're rude, you know, that should reflect on our business. Um, but you can certainly bring it to our attention and we'll bring it to.
Yeah, no, wasn't an ordinance or something about blowing your horn at two and three o'clock in the morning?
That would be a noise ordinance, I think.
Jesse, what we did in the, um, quality of life committee is we had a meeting with Patrolman Fiore because he, um, works with the cab companies. And if there are complaints and you can get the cab company name, um, it goes, he goes directly to the company, talks to them, and they have the numbers of the cab, that helps also. And they will take action because they don't wanna lose their licenses here in the city.
Right, and all the cabs do have a number on them, so if you say cab number one twenty-two, it's easier for them to make, it's almost like a premise report on a bar. So the more reports on a cab, the better it is to take, for the police to take the appropriate action.
All right, thank you.
I, I totally agree with everybody, uh, Garrett Guyerson, all the volunteers, yesterday, fantastic parade, I thank them very much. Also yesterday was Asbury Park Fishing Club Flea Market, which I'm sure the next meeting I'll be asked to hand out six or seven checks to worthwhile organizations. Every dollar they take in, they give back to the city. Uh, I, I attended a luncheon today at Mount Carmel Church, and it was an excellent event. And it'll be both in, I thank the sun, I thank the coasters, they attended it, and it's be the first time in June the fourth. Alexandra's Playground, a foundation that builds playgrounds throughout the, the world, uh, is building a playground at Mount Carmel. And Mount Carmel's been there for ninety years, it'll be the first playground there. It was an excellent presentation, excellent event. Bob Baroska, uh, his family goes back generations in Asbury Park, and Bob puts in more time. I think I put in a lot of time to volunteer at Asbury Park, he makes me look like a rookie. What, what the hours this man puts in every year to help that facility in Mount Carmel, he just has to be recognized, so I thank him. The articles are gonna be great, and hopefully June fourth, we'll all be over there and see this playground get built. First time in ninety years, Mount Carmel have a playground. A lot of great things going on in Asbury Park, so again, thank you Garrett, thank you Joe Palado, and thank you Bobby Baroska, that's all I have.
Onto matters by city manager.
Thank you, House Speaker. Wifi on the beach, we're review of polls. When I first started in November, one of the things that was discussed was that implementation of wifi on the beaches as part of what is commonly referred to as a menu item by Madison Marquette. Uh, we met a couple weeks ago, uh, there was two proposals that Madison Marquette had secured. The rollout will be simple, everything at max capacity, so that is a good user experience at first, we have the ability to dial up and dial down. The bandwidth is needed, obviously you don't need bandwidth in October like you would not for the July weekend. But it would allow for free public wifi, no advertising, uh, along the entire beach. The cost, it was built into last year's menu item, and to roll it out completely, which should be done, would be an additional fifteen thousand dollars rollover money, which we have about fifty-five thousand dollars still remaining. So it doesn't even impact this year's menu items. Um, from what I understand, it's a resolution by council, uh, according to the agreement, that that gets rolled over. If that's an agreeable solution from the council, it, we can do it for the March meeting and have everything up and running pretty quickly. Um, we were looking at probably a two-year agreement, uh, hopefully with the company, so if it does work or doesn't work, we can, we can get out. The maximum bandwidth would be up to three hundred megabits, which would be enough to do, you know, watch a small video on a phone or an iPad, um, to, to have a good experience doing it.
Do you wanna like briefly explain what menu item money, what menu item money is, so people understand that this isn't money coming out of the city budget in any way? And the goal of it, and maybe Carrie might even be, um, better to, e- either one of you, just what menu mu, menu money, ever, you know what I'm talking about, right? Cause I'll, I'll go online and people will be like, menu?
I can explain it, like, um, as part of the subsequent developer agreement between the city, um, ourselves and Asbury Partners, Madison Developers. There is provision in there that every year, uh, Madison will spend a hundred thousand dollars on capital projects in the waterfront area. And we already meet with, uh, the city, uh, prior to a certain date and decide who those are gonna meet, and the city council passes a resolution adopting what hundred thousand dollars is gonna be spent on that year. So the thirty thousand dollars was part of last year's resolution, they earmarked for, uh, the wifi, and we spent a little bit of that money doing all of the work and research, getting the, um, meeting with the city police department, et cetera, et cetera, to make sure we went on duplicating or not doing anything going on. I, I, I don't have a background in this, so we use someone who actually is over here. Um, and so that's how we've come to where we are now, and we've, we realized we actually could do it very well, we request a little bit more money. And there is, um, when Michael says there's rollover money, uh, when we don't spend some of the hundred thousand every year, what's not spent rolls over into the next year. So since the agreement has been signed, um, in twenty-ten, uh, through twenty-fifteen, you have about fifty-four thousand dollars in rollover money left over.
And the goal of it is to do, is to make capital improvements that improve the experience of the people coming to the Asbury Park Boardwalk, would that be fair?
It's for the waterfront area, right?
Okay.
Very good, thank you. Sounds good.
So then the next step is a resolution for the thirtieth, and we'll be able to move ahead with that. Uh, we've discussed the safer rant already, and, um, the beach staff, uh, Garrett Guyerson said it here, and Joe Devangi, if I pronounced that wrong, I'm sorry. Have approached me, that someone approached them involving having a mobile application for beach badges, that you would be able to register, um, ahead of time, so you don't have to wait in line, scan it with a QR code and get onto the beach faster. As they even put it, we're two dinosaurs who don't understand this, but we understand it's gonna get people on the beach faster. I met with the, one of the vendors, and it's a very nice and easy application that right now is only available on iPhones, it's for the Apple iOS. They'll be coming to Android towards the end of the summer. Uh, there's no cost to the city, we have to go out for an RFP for this, so it is an open fair competition. The company that approached us is about seven neighbor accounts, so it is a reputable vendor, but again, there is an RFP process and no cost to the city. So if everyone's in agreement, we can just put out the RFP to see what the cost would be or what sort of function it can have.
And so what happens, I have, do I get a real badge set, can this just for daily badges, is that it?
You, you, we can do whatever we want. Uh, it could be for monthly, annual, daily, hour, whatever you wanted to do on it. Um, it scans a code that, that gets a printout, so you're not waiting in line and, well, in line, um, and you could just walk right up to the regular beach park and, and get it. Joe and Garrett have worked out some, some of the process of it, and they're enthusiastic about it because it'll get people on the beach faster. That's what we've been really trying to concentrate on, is giving a, a even better beach experience.
And who would be, and I love, you know, I love both of them, but who, who would be taking care of getting this, this kinda project going? Would that, just because they don't know much about apps, right?
Oh, they know nothing about apps.
Okay, so, so you would be then taking. Right, so you'll be.
Quite honestly, it, it is that, that easy, that it's just a download in the Apple Play Store.
Okay.
And that is it, they, all the hardware is secured, it's just scanning QR code from another phone to another phone.
So the beach attendants would have, just using their phones? We're gonna have to get some for some of them.
Do we, do we have credit cards in the little booths?
Yes.
All of them?
No.
The main booth.
Main. So the one all the way by second?
Correct.
So, and I, again, say, I'm saying this with love, it would be wonderful if, I love the app idea, but why can't we have credit cards at some of the smaller booths? So people who don't carry cash, myself included, can just get a badge and use their debit or ATM card?
I don't know why there isn't credit cards everywhere, I'll ask them. So I'll just ask them.
Yeah.
More than likely, it is because of the phone line installation, because you have to have a dedicated old school landline, I haven't had one in my phone since two thousand.
Couldn't they also?
You can use the square system.
Yeah.
Get a square for them.
But then, we all, there's also some privacy concerns there and how, how are we gonna tie those into our bank accounts and, you know, swear PayPal, yeah, we can use any of those, but, you know, we wanna try to keep one vendor with it. And that's why we have a credit card machine there.
And maybe we could get just more than the one on second, right? Cause if you pull up to eighth, you don't wanna walk to second after you use your credit card and then come back, right?
Which app?
I should have an Apple phone.
Maybe.
All right. Is that it, Michael?
Yes, ma'am, clear.
Matters from the city attorney?
No matters at this time.
All right, we're up to public participation, have a motion to open a meeting to the public.
Move it.
Second.
All right, the public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order and after appropriate warning, may terminate any further comments from the speaker. Each speaker has three minutes to speak. When you come up to the mic, please state your name and address for the record. Maureen, you're on.
Thank you. Maureen Nevin, D L Lake Court. And if everybody could talk like Cindy talks, there wouldn't be people walking out of the here saying, no, no, it wasn't like that, it was like this, and the confusion goes on and on, you know? And I realize you guys get, you know, involved in what you're saying and discussing, and you forget that you're not on mic, you know?
But then we need better mics, mine's like six inches away from my face.
We could, we could hear you, fine.
We need a better sound system.
Then we need a better sound system.
Which AP TV sent an email a few months ago about the sound system.
Because I mean, I can't get this any closer to me.
No, no, I can, I can hear you fine, I don't know whether it's just that your voice projects better or, or what, but, um, you're still really far away from those microphones, wouldn't that help if they were just closer?
Much closer.
Move a little closer.
Okay, got you.
Uh-huh.
Got you.
And I mumble.
Anyway, so, I had some questions, where'd they go? All right, um, the question is, do we make more in tax revenue for a retail parking lot? Um, or a lot used for commercial vehicle storage? Anybody answer that?
Finish all your questions.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Michael's gonna say, what do you mean?
Okay, um, I wanted to ask also about the, uh, two items that are going to be, and held in executive session on Wednesday. And, um, I guess Fred will answer that. Um, specifically, I would like more information about why it's under contract negotiations, especially with iStar, because I believe that we have a signed contract with them, or else they wouldn't be doing business with us. So to say that it's negotiating it is a little bit of a stretch, I, that's my position, that's my question. Um, the redevelopment attorneys, could you tell us who you've chosen? And, um, the escrow accounts that you were discussing earlier, I was totally lost. Um, the escrow money is, is for who and it's gonna be used for what? And about the beach grass, it would, it would seem to make sense that we would want the beach grass to be wherever we lost boardwalk during the worst storms. Um, and I wonder if you, you know, that is included in your, um, your deliberations on, on where you're gonna do that. And. I think that's it.
Fifteen seconds, got to go.
You want me to start? So yeah, start at the bottom. Uh, yeah, so the beach grass, the, the discussion about dunes has been going on for years and years and years, and I think everybody feels generally more comfortable about the north end. As opposed to areas, and, and to your point, we absolutely got hit worse in that north end, right? That, that we lost part of the wall at the treatment plant, the tower had an electrical fire and needed to be evacuated, and D L Lake got just filled with sand and then all block armor got hit.
But also in the clowns.
Right, so there are others that got hit as well. Yeah, and the discussion there, so to just step back, the people feel more comfortable that area because it got hit the hardest, and it's not the, um, area of the boardwalk where you've got a bunch of people sitting on the boardwalk looking at the ocean. So I think the, if there is a larger discussion, there's always, to have dunes along the whole. So I think the, if there is a larger discussion, there's always, to have dunes along the whole beach is, is a bigger discussion. And it's a discussion that we can absolutely have. But there has always been more of a need of a discussion for that southern end of the boardwalk. The renegotiation for the waterfront agreement, it's amendments to the agreement. So it's an actual act of negotiation. It's not just the discussion of the old agreement, it's negotiations for amendments, which have been happening for a while now. And this council's priority is to get those amendments done within next year.
And although Asbury Partners iStar is listed there, they're listed there just because they are the other party to the existing agreement, but they are not part of the discussion that will be taking place in executive session.
Good. And the redevelopment attorneys?
You, you, Joe.
I'll start from the, the end, the escrow agreements. What the mayor was talking about is the amount listed was three thousand dollars. And that is approximately, we'll say, ten hours of McMenamin-Scottman's billing rate. So if we use them for eleven, we have to go back to McMenamin, back to a developer and have some more money. So the mayor's saying, let's raise the escrow amount to five thousand. And it gives a little bit more legroom for us to do some more.
But, but who's paying the escrow amount?
The developers.
This is the possibility.
And the developers are asking for amendments to the downtown plan, the central business district plan. So in order for us to even consider those amendments, we have to do some research. Our team, our legal team has to do some work, so the developers are paying for that work that our legal team will be doing.
Okay, so the larger the project, wouldn't you want to have a higher escrow though? I mean, if they were talking about, what's the, the Ocean Avenue Esperanza redo? I mean, you'd obviously want more than three thousand than you would for some CBD area.
This is for our, our first start of it, which is going to be Michelle's decision. Michelle's breakage charge back to the escrow. So that's where we'll start. We see what we can possibly do, then we talk to redevelopment attorney McMenamin-Scottman. And then we bring the council if it's possible to do what's the approach.
So we, we won't be locked into that three thousand? Okay, that's good.
And then the redevelopment attorney there is now recommended to McMenamin-Scottman, who's been existing, and Falcone, Masadi, I believe it's pronounced, they butchered the name for a month. And they will be able to be used at the discretion of the director of planning redevelopment, Michelle and myself, for other projects. And the reason why they're being recommended and staffed is that for smaller profit, smaller projects or nonprofit developers, McMenamin's rates are high. They're approximately three hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour for development work. These Falcone was two hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. So it's going to be cheaper for the nonprofits to get something.
So that's Falcone and Ocean Township?
No.
No?
Livingston, somewhere in Essex County, because I believe it was Livingston, Fore Park.
So we're staying with the same redevelopment attorney?
We're staying with one and adding one.
What's that?
Staying with one with existing projects they are working on and adding another one...
To start picking up new projects.
I thought that was only for the smaller ones and the...
For right now, yes.
Five oh one C three, what?
For right now, yes.
So...
But as new projects come online, we'll make a decision as to who's best suited to deal with the projects.
So, so all of the ocean, the oceanfront redevelopment will strictly be Scotland then?
Not necessarily.
All existing. The word, the stuff that they're working on now, like eleven oh one...
The hotel.
They're taking eleven oh one, they're taking the hotel. When something new comes up, we'll make a determination as to who's going to handle it.
So these big projects though, on, on the waterfront?
Well, we're hoping some of them are lot by lot and not block by block. So there could be a lot of small ones on the waterfront also.
But the Esperanza, it's going to be Scotland?
Correct.
And did you decide on the performance bond yet?
No.
What?
I believe, no.
We talked about that a while ago.
Yes.
We, that was already discussed.
We discussed it and left it open. It was supposed to be up to the new attorney. New attorney.
No, we, well, we couldn't answer the new attorney because it was out of bits. We didn't know if there was going to be a new attorney. And I'll go back through some of the meeting minutes and find what was said then. But I...
But how, how did you leave it with Scotland now on the performance bond?
I believe that, because Carl was here that night, I believe he addressed it. And I'll go back through the meeting.
Well, he said, he said we've never done it before, was his answer.
I don't believe so. We'll, we'll give you an answer.
That's what he said.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, it's one thing you didn't answer.
Oh, the lots?
Yeah.
The parking lots are tax parking lots. It doesn't matter what use is the parking.
Does it matter whether it's a commercial storage lot or?
No.
I think it's already, it's not zoned for commercial storage of vehicles.
Okay.
It's a block from the oceanfront.
Robert Weiner, six oh one Madison. I have a couple of questions, Bangs Avenue Garage. My first question is, and maybe Joe knows this, how many residents have signed up for parking permits in the garage? And I ask this again because taking off, cars off the street was the main reason my fees went from forty dollars a month to seventy-five dollars a month. So that's question number one. Second, who decides when the Bangs Avenue Garage is going to be open? Will it be open on weekends? It was open this weekend and for the first time in, I think, four, five, six weeks. And how do we advise the public when it's going to be open, or is it just a surprise? So who decides that? And lastly, three weeks ago, I suggested that there was a sign be placed on the Springwood Avenue Police Station saying parking permits available here, along with the hours. I didn't check this morning, but I don't think I ever saw the sign. And if you don't think you need the sign, that's fine, I'll, I'll stop bringing it up. And those are my questions.
I'd like to get behind the mic there because I have more questions about the Bangs Ave Garage.
I think we all have questions.
We all have questions, but, but I don't, I don't have an answer for you about the Bangs Ave Garage. The frustration is across the board. I don't, we weren't able to give out, the last I heard, we weren't able to give out resident permits there. So I don't even know if we're giving them out. We're, I, I don't know what the status is. That was what was most, was...
Yeah, I mean, do I get refunds? I mean, I'm, I'm not joking. I mean, I'm going to continue paying this extra money for, in my mind, no reason whatsoever.
Right, so there, the only...
And I'm paying it to Meridian, don't forget. I'm paying it to the state. The city is getting no benefit from my money.
Right.
I'm paying it to the state.
Yeah, I mean, I think there, there are two separate issues, raising the rates and opening it up. Raising the rates was to bring it back into the market, marketplace, which it wasn't at. But opening it up was to get people off the street and leave the street parking for visitors. And do we have a situation where we can give out the? I'll, I'll check with Gene tomorrow, but do we have an update as far as the Bangs Ave Garage? Can we sell permits?
I thought we were still, I thought we were selling permits. I'll double check with that. But what had happened when we met with the, the garage manager was, they finally agreed to consolidate some of the spaces. We were all over the place, some were on the roof. So we were taking, I believe it was the second floor, second, third floor? Consolidating it to one, that work has been finished. And from what I've understood, we've actually been selling the spaces there because there was a whole issue with Carter's lease agreements that was borrowed at the last meeting of the hundred dollars. And that they, someone had said that they went to purchase a, a permit and that they had been asked for proof that they didn't have to purchase a car. So I, I was under the impression that they were always selling. I'll double check. But I, as far as I knew, that they were, they were selling those.
And then can you have an answer at a Wednesday meeting on it?
Yeah.
Here, I, you know, I'll get your number after, I'll call you tomorrow, Robert. Because I want an update to, to how many we have sold.
Me too.
And then if we haven't sold...
So do it Wednesday too, so I'd like to answer that too.
Right, right, right.
And the Bangs Ave Garage, Robert, was a disaster, right? So Friday night, it was closed. So we got calls, people were profoundly unhappy, as they should be. The whole reason we opened it on weekends is to be open to parking.
But it hasn't been open for over a month.
I know, I know. So we got it open Friday night after a bunch of the council members went bananas. And from my understanding, it's now going to be open.
It'll be open every weekend from here on out.
Okay, and how are we going to notify the public in any way, shape, or form, other than...
With the open sign.
Pardon me?
With the open sign.
And Hannah, put it in the email blast.
Okay.
And we'll put it, Hannah will put it on our Facebook page. She'll get it out at least via social media.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure the poster and the sun will both report it.
Okay, if the sun reports, there's a lot more people read it. And my last question was about a sign on the Springwood Avenue Police Station? I could make up the sign myself for you if you...
I was told that the police department has done it, and I guess they did it, so...
Make it up, make it up, we'll get it quicker.
Okay.
I, I, I agree with you. I mean, and we thought it was up too. Michael thinks the garage is being sold. I would bet on it. I'd like to meet whoever this guy Gary Carr is, the parking guru in Trenton, who's either on vacation, shoveling out the snow, cannot make a trip from Trenton to Asbury Park to figure this out. And so we meet with Meridian, and they're just the middle people. And they have, they have consolidated spaces. You go in there, you see different color paint, you see all, if you, you go to Asbury Park...
I've seen it, yes, yes.
You see the city's put up signs, reserved, ordinance, and we put up the ordinance number. But we're, we're getting little cooperation to none from Trenton. And I don't give a damn what they say, that's the truth.
Right, okay.
It's, 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 it's totally ridiculous. And whoever Gary Carr is should be taken to the carpet. But for some reason, we won't let our political input in Trenton tell Trenton that.
Okay, thank you.
Tracy Rogers, Monroe Avenue. I wanted to ask about the, the cameras. I know that was supposed to be in the process of the cameras being, is there any update on the cameras?
You don't mean the body, the, not the body worn cameras?
No, no, the ones around the city. Like a long process. Right now, also on, have we ever closed the situation with going into the FEMA situation? With the introducer of the budget coming in? I mean, is that going to? Have we rectified the situation with the two hundred thousand and going into the budget? So we don't look at having to take out two hundred thousand for that situation? And also, I came across a report. It said Asbury Park needs to move forward, provide its employees with compatible technology to increase worker productivity. The city, uh, the city received a quote from a management system applicable for code enforcement zoning, processing license permits in an amount of sixty-two thousand, with the elimination of building permit section, with the cost to drop from fifty, fifty-seven thousand. The price includes software, training, annual maintenance, and data conversion. The cost of the hardware include a file server, four tablets, approximately fifteen thousand, and the cost of package would be about seventy-two thousand. Right now, um, I'd like to tell you where I got that from. I got that from a report that covered the city in two thousand, in nineteen ninety-nine, from the acting governor. Right now, we are not seeing ourselves increasing and increasing the ability of using technology to be efficient. When you have a report since two thousand, what does it say? That we need to speed up and look at ways of being more productive? Because everything seems to be a hole. We're finding errors where you're giving, you don't know what we have going, what we need going. When are we going to sit down and get this done?
You done? Are you done?
Yes.
I'll, I'll start, then Michael will take it over. You're, you're right, and I can show you reports from two thousand one, two thousand eleven, two thousand blah, blah, blah. And some of them are correct, and some, I mean, two thousand one was a report saying you're better off with an in-house attorney than having outside attorneys. I mean, there's a ton of reports out there. As far as like, what are we doing to move forward as far as technology? I mean, Kevin's done a great job at the fire department with the GO three, and us being expanded to the code department, which is going to, what you're asking, which was said in two thousand nine, this council is finally doing in two thousand sixteen. We didn't do it last year because we didn't have the information, we couldn't do it last year. Now we do, and it's going to be online. And then, Mike, I'll let you take it over.
And before Michael takes over, when we interviewed for city managers, one of the things that Michael, I think, is like a level two tech support, something like that, so one of the reasons Michael is our city manager here today is because he's going to get the city up to speed. And when I say Tracy, this doesn't happen overnight, it takes a little bit of time. But we're moving in the right direction, I think, so, but Michael will fill you in more on that.
The price of the GO three system for code enforcement is probably ten, nine, thousand dollars. It will also tie into the fire department. And we can do data dumps with the building department, construction department, with the Mitchell Humphrey system as needed. The entire cost is fifteen thousand dollars.
I know.
You want to say what the GO three is for anyone in the audience who doesn't know?
The GO three is a software application that will allow us to do the code, what code enforcement does by pen and paper now over a cloud-based, online system. So what happens now is they go do an inspection, they handwrite it, it comes back, the report is done, and then sent out to the property owner. This will allow, it cuts out that middle person, middle work of having to rewrite the report. You just sit there, you enter into your, your data terminal, whether it's a laptop or a mobile device, and it just goes. So that is in this year's budget to be implemented.
And just to add to it, it also cross references with police and fire. So if there's been fire problems or police calls, or police shows up and there's code violations that are open, they get all that information when they show up at the house. So it starts to integrate all the departments, which is a long time coming, I know, but it's getting there.
It's going to take a lot of time and effort to do it.
Yeah, but we just need to get it done. The cameras?
They are on target, scheduled for the end of this month, weather permitting, some hardware issues permitting. They were ahead of schedule, the last report, which was about two weeks ago. They were about a week ahead of schedule, so right now, everything is on target for the end of the month.
And are we going to get hit with the FEMA?
I don't know what you're talking about with FEMA.
With FEMA, the, the fact that they said some of the invoices weren't correct, two hundred thousand dollars, the record... You're reconciling what was actually paid during FEMA, which there was over two hundred thousand dollar worth of invoices they didn't accept.
Do you know which category or PW they're talking about?
The, the Department of Public Works?
That would probably be category protective measures. From what I've heard, talking to Tracy, who handles all the FEMA reimbursements, everything has been brought up to speed. We're going to be closing out category A the next couple of weeks, and category B has been on target. Couple of weeks ago, we asked for O'Brien to come in and give us some additional help because the state has a deadline of March first to try to close everything out. But from my understanding, he's talking to Tracy, and, and her conversations with the rest were on target for everything. All, everything has been reconciled.
I mean, can we get confirmation you're going into a budget that you're introducing eighteen?
There's a deferred charge that's going to happen no matter what. But the two hundred thousand dollars, I didn't see in any of the paperwork that came across my desk that you're talking about unreconciled. There's a deferred charge, but that standard, there was nothing about missing reconciliation. And I'll double check with Tracy, but I talked about this about any...
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Louise Murray, Grand Avenue, Asbury Park. I would like the council and the mayor and anybody else up there to please explain to me what's going on with Kennedy Park. Because approximately five years ago, we were asked to do a subdivision of that park. And we were to, if it was going to be approved, we were supposed to do the de-descriptions for the subdivision. However, when we gave the map to Don Sammet, I have to dig for it, but apparently Chris, my son, who did the subdivision, found some kind of restrictions, and I think it was duly noted on the map. And every time I asked Don about it, he said, "Well, I gave it to the attorneys because they're researching it." And it's six years ago, five years ago, whatever, I haven't heard anything more about it. And then all of a sudden, one day, I hear that you guys are going to cut up the park. And I like to, I like an explanation as to what exactly is being done, that's all.
Is that it?
That's it. I mean, can it be done?
Sure. Well, first, in terms of the area that is involved with this transaction, it's not what you would consider to be the area of the park. It's, the park is an irregularly shaped parcel right now. And there is an, an area that doesn't appear to be parkland that actually juts out into the gravel parking lot, which is adjacent to Moonstruck. So... So what is being considered and, and what is transpiring now is, and this dates back to 2009, when the city executed a contract of sale with the protect, prospective purchaser, who actually owns the remainder of that gravel park, is that the city is subdividing off, and has received approval from its planning board to do this, a 25-by-100-foot sliver, which is not going to decrease the existing area of the park itself, what we consider to be the park, but just taking off that area which juts out into the gravel parking lot that cars are currently parking on. And the city is selling that to the adjacent property owner for the amount of $200,000. And the adjacent property owner is going to consolidate that with their current parcel, and they will then have to make an application for development approvals before the planning board to do whatever it is that they want to do on that area, and it would have to be in accordance with the central business district redevelopment plan.
Have you seen the map?
So, I think what you're getting at, Louise, and what, what the issue was, and it, it happened with the Green Acres Department, is that even though it doesn't look like parkland, as Fred said, it's part of the, it's part of the gravel parking lot, it was actually parkland. And because it's Green Acres, what has to happen is, in order to get our recreation, open space inventory, our Rossi correct, we need to do, when we've done, a diversion where you do a two-for-one swap. So that is swapped. Now, that which was Green Acres is no longer Green Acres, and the two-for-one swap happened on Springwood, I believe.
Yes, and we got approval from the DEP for that diversion of that area, because that land area was previously part of the city's recreation and open space inventory. And in order to take that off, that 25-by-100-foot sliver, we needed to make up for that on a two-for-one basis. And we got the approval from the DEP to do so at Springwood Park.
Which allowed us to go forward with our most recent Green Acres application. If you remember, years ago, the former council never went forward with Green Acres applications, and it wasn't clear why they didn't. Part of the reason they never did is that our Rossi was not in order because of this piece here. So now the Rossi is in order, everything's in good standing at Green Acres, we received the $1 million, and we're trying our best to use it.
And now the park app of the subdivision will be a perfect rectangular shape without this extra little area that used to jut out into the gravel parking lot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, Rita Moran, the 8th Avenue. What happened to the Bradley restrictions on that property? Anybody consider them?
They were considered. I know the matter was looked into quite a bit by redevelopment council, and that they have provided assurances to the city that that's not an issue. That's already been reviewed, and redevelopment council's resolved that issue.
What about all the air, the Bradley restrictions? What happened to them?
I'm sure that they...
Before you know it, you'll be putting a building on the park. That's what the Bradley restrictions are about, that you can't change the park. And you're changing it, you didn't even go to the Bradley restrictions. And there was a member on the planning board that is an heir to the Bradley restrictions. Nobody, I mean, like, what happened? Even on the map, it says Bradley restriction. How do you go to Green Acres when it belongs to the Bradley restriction? I mean, the $200,000 looks good, but if we start breaking up the parks, we're going to have buildings on them. That's what the restrictions are about.
I want to see proof of who's on our planning board and is an heir to the Bradley estate, like a...
John knows who.
No, I know who too, but I want, I want to see that somewhere in writing that you're, you're an heir to it. Because I've been here, if everybody who says they're an heir is an heir, then we got a lot, we got a lot of heirs in town.
It's like 200 heirs. Yeah, all right. I, I just wanted to say that. The next thing was, March 1st came and went. Did we collect 100% of our mercantile licenses?
No, because everybody hasn't paid them yet, and who pays late will pay a $100 fine. So we may be over 100%, but have we collected them all? No.
How about the dog licenses?
Have we collected them all? No. There was an article in the paper the other day, a dog pet somebody didn't have a license, so we collected them all? No.
The other thing, I, I was wondering if you felt comfortable with the city manager after three months, and not even three months, when you had the holidays in between, takes a vacation. I'm just wondering about that. I mean, like, this is a pretty complex town.
Absolutely. It was a...
Oh, you approve of that?
Yes. It was a, his wife works, it was a good weekend with two days in between. All over for him to take his three-year-old daughter to Disney World, absolutely, effing looped it. I mean, without doubt. I mean, no question. Come on, Rita.
Listen, I don't want to get into his family life. I mean, like, as it is, he has to leave a half hour earlier. I mean, you know, this is a business.
He stays here very late on meeting nights, he stays here very late on other nights, and he was at the St. Patrick's Day parade yesterday. I mean, yes.
And on the weekends, he gets emails from all of us and calls.
And he answers them.
He answers them, like...
And he's here early.
Huh?
So when I was, when I was away, I was, in the evening, I would answer all the emails that came in.
We're a product of a non-responsive city manager, so he's going to be responding.
The city doesn't sleep every Friday night at 4:30, that's what I wanted to say. But I have one more thing. I wanted to ask about the, geez, that would piss my mind. I wanted to ask about something real, oh, the holiday, remember you went, you asked me to give you questions so you could give the labor attorney, and you would get the answers and then give them to me? Well, I, you know, I don't want to go through a third party, but I want to know why in February we get Lincoln's birthday, Washington's birthday, and then President's Day? Isn't President's Day for Lincoln and Washington? Isn't that one holiday? You know, you ought to have the labor attorney here. We have a lot of questions to ask him about contracts.
There were not three days off, there were two days off as per contracts.
What?
There was not three days off, there were two days off as per contracts going back to probably when you worked for the city.
No, 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 there was three days off.
No, there wasn't.
President's Day. You didn't take President's Day?
I believe there was two paid holidays off. Write those questions down, and really, call me up, tell me the questions, I'll, I'll ask Lincoln.
He should be here, he's making $100,000.
No, no, no.
He's going to charge us extra.
He used to make $120,000, and now with us, he's making $72,000. So no, he's not making $100,000. He's making $72,000, he's on call 24/7, so when you submit your questions, I'll call him up.
He also is also very, I've talked to him many times, just, he picks up, he always picks up the phone, he's there, he's, he's there when we need him. From my experience.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Jerry Scrann, Long Branch, New Jersey. What I want to ask is, now that the bridge is getting closer to completion, are the bids or anything going to happen with Fourth Avenue and Third Avenue? Because maybe what we should do is spray the pothole a different color, like orange, or dayglow green, or dayglow orange, so they, people see them. Because when I'm riding with people sometimes, I said, "You got a score of 100." And what do you mean? You haven't missed one pothole. Anyway, need to do something about that, it should be highlighted. Now, the other thing, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but when I got on Nextdoor, Amy's friends kicked me off, even though, I mean, Asbury Park...
I got an office score, I went next door.
I just been preparing, thinking about, but I have to go through Rita's Nextdoor, and a lot of people are complaining about taxes.
You kicked me off, forgotten that, Jerry.
Amy, we've got a spotlight tonight, that's all. Anyway, everybody's talking about taxes. One way to make people feel happy is you got to give them something if you're charging them for something. I've been asking for a budget committee. I know at least 10, 10 people that could help save the city 5%. That's what they told me. And I believe we need a budget committee. And I'm sorry, you guys are all going to be running for office again come next November. I mean, not all, but I mean, all as in a group, because even if you're not running, you still got to support the members. You really got to say, "Listen, people, this is what we're doing." It's not as easy as you think to cut back on the, on the cost of doing business in the city. And you'll have a whole committee that can back you up. Just to say you're working on it and you're going to save taxes, that's the same baloney that we hear from everybody. But if you had a budget committee, it shows they're working on it. You really need to do the right thing and have a budget committee, because we have at least 10 people, a couple in this room, that could help save 5% for the city. It's supposed to be average people. I mean, and if you're really talking about that, I'll throw everybody out there, but you get out-of-towners to help cut taxes, not the people that live in here. That way, they can see the book without being influenced by relatives or whatever. So can I get a, a half a promise, then I can move forward to the next thing? But thank you very much. We need the budget committee. Give it a try. You're running for office again. I mean, it's, it's, you can't just say we're going to cut taxes.
We never said, nobody never said that.
We never say we're going to cut taxes, Jerry.
As long as we're on transition, we've been so upfront, saying we can't cut taxes.
We didn't like that answer either.
I, I agree with you, but talk to the good old governor, talk to our legislature.
Are we going to get a budget committee? I really got to keep asking, we need one.
I know you're going to, that I'll give you 50% on, I know you're going to, I'll give you 100% on. I know two weeks from now, you're going to ask the same question.
Well, it's like the GPS and other things else, it's not going to go away.
GPS is in this year's...
The health benefits that the council lost?
GPS is in this year's budget.
Okay, I mean...
So we're getting there, so next year, the budget committee may be there.
No, we got to do it before you guys run, because you need something to say you did something inventive, you thought out of the box. I'm trying to help you guys. You guys are very good, very nice. Thank you very much, and good night, everybody.
Thank you, Jerry.
Very good and very nice.
Motion to close?
Move it.
Any other further comments? Motion, motion to adjourn?
Move it.
That was the closed public. Thank you. All in favor, all opposed?
Oh, you did, okay.